All right. I'd like to call to order this school board business meeting, August 23rd, 6:00 PM, Independent School District 834. Barb, could I please have a roll call?
Certainly. Board Chair Pelletier.
Here.
Vice Chair Stivland.
Here.
Treasurer Pearson.
Here.
Clerk Gallockland.
Here.
Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
And appointee Don Hovland.
Here.
You have four of them.
Thank you very much. Could we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the district mission statement. I believe that's Sarah Stivland.
Thank you. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And school board goals, Director Hepner, please.
The Stillwater Area Public Schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement, along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. We invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you very much. Item five on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If I could please have a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next on the agenda is the oath of office with Mr. Don Hovland. So if you'd like to join me down in front.
It is an honor that you were selected to guide the education of our community's children.
As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Mr. Hovland, could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Having signed the acceptance of office, excuse me, having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
Having signed the acceptance of office and the oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I hereby publicly confirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
And discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of School Board.
Of the Office of School Board.
Member of Independent School District 834.
Member of Independent School District 834.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, Mr. Hovland. You are hereby on the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we are moving on now to item number seven, introductory items, and that is the Summer Success Student Leadership, Mr. Eric Anderson.
Board Member Hovland, welcome to the board. That was a good reminder and a good lead-in about what services, and so just a thanks to all of you for your service to the community. I'm here quickly to honor a group of student leaders who were really integral in helping our Summer Success Program be successful. The philosophy of our Summer Success Program was authentic relationships plus high student engagement plus vigorous instruction equals limitless learning potential. And when we brought the student helpers on board, we wanted them to have kind of a quota, an operating paradigm, and so we took a quote from a man named Jonathan Swift. And Jonathan Swift says, "It is in us, as in soils, where sometimes there is a vein of gold which the owner knows not of." And so the student helpers' goal during this three-week program was to really seek out and find that gold in the 230 students they served, and also help them see that vein of gold within themselves. So with that, I'm going to recognize our student helpers. We had 15 student helpers. Many could not be here tonight because they work part or full-time jobs, and I really think it's important to bring their names into the room as well. They really wanted to be here, but I'm going to start by calling their names off. Fatima Manawa, Solugla Gurin, Elsa Olson, Millie O'Sai, Rachel Bernath, Parker Mock, Claire Dix, Omar Omar, Faith Hendry, and then Elena Mankowski. And for our six student helpers who were able to make it tonight, I'm going to call your name and ask you to please come up and get your certificate. We'll start with June Frederick. And then a special recognition for Revlon Wesson. Revlon has been a Math Corps tutor in our district for four years. She has come and worked in our Summer Success Program. She has this kind, gentle demeanor that draws kids in and gets them excited about math, and she's actually going to be working one more year as a Math Corps tutor at Lake Elmo Elementary School. And I was there the other day, and her room was a hot mess. And so I put together a few things to help you put your classroom together. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to make any comments or questions, Ms. Eric? No? I want to thank you. I had a chance to visit the program, and it's fantastic. So thanks for everything you do. Director Stivland, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you also to all of you for giving your time to support the learning of students in our district. I wonder if, before you leave, could you just put a plug in for any future potential? How do people sign up for this? How do they get involved? Is it something that is open, or is there a selection process for those who might be interested in helping in the future?
Yeah, so the selection process has been a little bit informal. What we worked with this year was our avid 10 and 11 cohort.
Okay.
And the National Junior Honor Society.
Okay.
And then, to be totally transparent, a few of us who are educators in the district had our children working in the program.
Okay.
That's something we're unapologetic about. We're losing 50% of our teachers in the first five years in the profession, and so anything we can do to sow those seeds, we will continue to do.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Was one of those students your daughter, Sonia?
Sonia Anderson, correct.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
And really quickly, I know I get verbose, but what we're going to try to do, thanks to the leadership of Corey Christiansen, who is our technology integration coach, we're going to give you a two-minute and 11-second visual of what happened during three weeks.
Awesome.
One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. Alrighty, and with that, we have two speakers tonight. Sarah Stivland, Director Stivland, as vice chair, will be taking the time, and our first speaker of the night is Carl Blondin.
Thank you, Chair Pelletier, members of the board, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. First, congratulations to Director Hovland on your appointment. I'm sure you're going to do a great job. As you may know or may not know, I'm an attorney, and I'm frequently concerned about legal issues that the district faces. The good news is this district has excellent attorneys, particularly Peter Michael. He did a great job in the litigation. He's an individual you should listen to in this time of, quite frankly, legal peril for the district. A number of months ago, Attorney Krista Hastings of the Pembroke Law Firm prepared a report on misconduct committed by two board members. I've only been able to read a redacted version of that report. As a board member, you can read the full report. The report describes some very immature and, quite frankly, regrettable behavior by two board members that I fear places the district in danger of serious legal exposure and places the public treasury at risk. The facts are bad. The law is not in the district's favor. I implore you to use your good judgment and follow the advice of Mr. Michael, whatever it may be. I don't know all the facts. Mr. Michael will know them. He knows that area of the law far better than I do. Please follow his advice. On a more mundane matter, where I actually do have some legal expertise, I noticed the district does have two judgments against Melissa Douglas, who did sue the district. One is only partially satisfied but not secured. I would suggest that the district make sure that judgment's secured or perhaps collected for a $10 fee. You can get a court order requiring her to make financial disclosure, and if she doesn't pay, your attorney can levy on her assets. If that's not successful, from my understanding, her homestead is Torrance property, not abstract property, so you'll need to transcribe the judgment onto the certificate of title to secure your judgment. The other judgment's up at the Court of Appeals. It does you no good there. You need to get a transcript of that judgment, dock it in District Court, and then proceed with enforcement. Obviously, I'm somewhat politically involved. I wouldn't touch it, but I'm sure there are plenty of collection attorneys who'd be happy to assist the district in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blondin. Next, we have Matthew Cooper.
I'm Dr. Matthew Cooper, as many of you know, and I'm pleased to announce that I am a candidate for a seat on the school board at the next election. My agenda includes four platforms. Number one, tireless efforts to ensure the physical safety of our students and staff. Number two, assuring the psychological safety of our schools that encourages and facilitates free expression. Number three, the evolution of our faculty, educational, curricular, and extracurricular activities to allow the development of individualized talent and interests. And then number four, excellence in preparation and performance of our students to allow them to compete in a rapidly changing world. This includes successful recognition of the excellence of our programs, which has implications for the opportunities that are offered to our graduates. For example, a recent ranking placed Stillwater High School 46th among Minnesota's 100 best public high schools. Knowing what I know about our systems and have seen, that is a tremendous undervaluation of our quality and what we offer, so we need to better play the evaluation game with respect to these outside bodies. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have minutes of August 8th, 2018, school board meeting, minutes of August 9th, 2018, school board meeting, dispersment register August 11th through the 24th, 2018, human resources personnel report, and amend 28 working groups. Could I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Director Pearson and a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. A second by Director Hepner. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Moving on to reports. The 2018 school board meeting calendar. I took the liberty to write something down for this because it's a little bit lengthy, and I thought I would start with just kind of the background of this. So I'm going to read this, if that's okay with everyone. This was initially going to be on the agenda as a report and action item on the same night, but I think we will need time to process the opportunities, so it will be slated as an action item at our next meeting. So again, tonight is just for purposes of learning and discussion. Next meeting will be an action item. We, however, will not be able to delay much longer than the next meeting, as we have to provide our truth and taxation meeting to the county by August 1st. Once they receive that date, it is set, so we have to have this decision made by then. I'm sorry, October 1st.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thanks. A little background on this. Denise had mentioned in one of our meetings that the day we choose for our meetings on Thursday nights, it has been this case for quite some time. It does not have to be on Thursday nights. It's not mandatory, although, again, it has been that case for a long time. Reasons for consideration of a move. There are board members with children who have concerts and sporting events on Thursday nights. There are also candidates who are running for office right now with children that are in that prime age where they may have games or concerts on Thursday nights. Further, it just came up that our board representatives from the school oftentimes have Thursday night conflicts. In fact, our board reps were unable to try out for soccer this year, as Thursday games are mandatory. When we discussed which other days may be considered, we took into account making sure the meetings would be available for taping, and we checked with Don Fixmer's schedule. We also did not want to interfere with 916 E-Mid or the partnership plan meetings. That left us with one day only, which was Monday nights. There is only one Monday night that looks to be a conflict in 2018 yet, and that is Christmas Eve. Heading into 2019, there is only one as well, that's Memorial Day. Both days can be moved without much hassle in that regard. Having said all this, there are a few options here, and this is, again, this is up for just sake of conversation. We have a few options. We can do nothing, look at the calendar, keep the meetings on Thursday nights. We can move to Monday nights for the remainder of 2018 and 2019 with the adjustment of Christmas Eve and Memorial Day. We can move to Monday nights for the remainder of 2018 and see what the newly-elected board thinks come 2019. Again, we can simply, we can do nothing, we can just keep status quo, or we consider this new option and have a discussion about it. We are not voting on this tonight, so at this time, I'll just open it up for comments, questions, consideration.
Shelly, thank you for all your reasons. Can you send those out to us so as we think about it?
Yeah, I absolutely will do that. Yep, absolutely.
And then, so tell us, and maybe you said this already, what started the conversation, what started thinking about it?
So I think, to be really honest with you, in my meetings with Superintendent Pontrelli, she, you know, she had noticed that a couple of us had been missing some meetings or some of our events with our children. So that kind of started a very casual conversation of, you know, just so you know, as a board, you're not held to a Thursday night schedule. And I didn't know that at the time. So she said, you know, if we're going to be moving and looking at the calendar, we thought, why don't we just bring this up for a conversation? And again, I think it's a great conversation to have. I'm not, you know, whatever the board thinks, we can go with. And again, this is just a conversation tonight. I did not want this to be an action item because it's a lot to process.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And so just one other date, I think it looks like spring break also would be a conflict, if this is what, where March 11th is circled?
You know, check with Barb, who was...
I think that week next, spring would be a conflict, yes.
So, spring break? Okay. Director Patachak?
What I'd like consideration for, and something that has evolved, and I'm pretty pleased with the present situation, is we have generally gotten our board packet of materials the Friday before, so that gives us a significant amount of time from Friday to Thursday to look at those packets. So what I, and I don't need that tonight, but I want that also to be a concern.
Prior to the action?
Is that what would be the deadline date for us getting materials prior to any meeting that would occur on Monday?
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Or, Don, Director Hovland, do you have any questions about that?
I know, having been a principal here for 26 years, a lot of our music events are on Thursdays, and also, a lot of athletic events are also on Thursday.
Exactly.
I don't know if it's still that way, but it used to be that way.
Yeah, it definitely is. And we, you know, again, this is a kind of a big change, so, you know, I'm not, you know, I really want your input on this. I think it's provocative enough to have a discussion about it, and I did feel badly when I heard that about our new board representatives, that they're going to miss their senior year of soccer for this. So that made me feel, that made me feel bad. So, Director Stivland, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit confused because I don't know if I missed something, but this is the first time I've heard about this. And I'm really surprised because I thought this was on the agenda to discuss moving our meetings to Oak Park Elementary, which I thought was something that we were going to talk about and, you know, consider and get a little bit more information about and at least put it out there so that people know that we're thinking about moving.
This is nothing to do with location. This is just our school board meeting calendar. That's all this is.
So just so you know, if you click on that top thing on the right. Yeah, that's not what it said on the... Says Chair Pelletier will lead a board discussion on changing the location of school board meeting to Oak Park Building. Yeah, that's not what the report said. So that's what I thought we were going to be talking about.
Well, so as we were talking about that, it was as we move into Oak Park, but it was primarily about the calendar and trying to get that going at the same, basically the same time we move into Oak Park. That's kind of where this discussion goes. So if you want to talk about, you know, that part of it, but the calendar date and switch, that's kind of the big ticket item, if you will, of, you know, do we want to move? Do we want to talk about moving these days? And we do need to have that vote done prior to that October 1st deadline. That's a really important deadline that we have to meet. Director Pearson?
So I appreciate the conversation about the changing the day. I think that's appropriate to have, and I think it probably will work for most of us. I think I'd like to have the same discussion about moving Oak Park, because I don't know that we've ever discussed it. It's just been kind of, here's what's happening.
That is a discussion I believe Superintendent Pontrelli needs to be here for, and she's not here tonight. So if someone wants to, we can kind of, I believe she's planning to discuss that at the next meeting or have a discussion at the next meeting, but I don't want to, you know, she needs to be here for some of those details. She's got the information on that.
So can I just clarify? So for our next meeting, we will be meeting here, correct? And there will be on the agenda, there will be a discussion about moving our location of our meetings to Oak Park? Is that...
As far as I'm concerned, Barb, is that what your takeaway was? Was it the next meeting that Denise was going to discuss that, or was it October?
At the September 13th meeting.
The September...
Yes, September 13th, you will meet here at 6:00. And I believe that is when she's planning on putting that on... she's planning on putting that on the agenda for discussion.
And so that would be a report, right? Or is that gonna be listed as an action item? Or do we not know yet?
Based on the conversations we've had this week, I am not opposed to separating this. If this is what the will of the board is, we can have an action item for the calendar only and have a discussion. If the will of the board is to have a discussion about the other component, being that Superintendent Pontrelli is not here tonight, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it is helpful to talk about things one at a time.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, again, given she's not here tonight, it's difficult to have that discussion, but...
Absolutely.
All right, anyone else? Director Patachik?
Two things. One, I think it would be advantageous to us as we consider and prep for possibly switching to Monday. If we looked at a list of the activities, I think the schedules are gonna be out on a lot of those things, so we'll see. Because here's the challenge I would think comes up. Every day of the week, something's going on. So I appreciate and respect the idea to minimize those, but I just wanna know how many conflicts there would be, whether it's music, whether it's athletics, or whatever the event, if there are anticipated any conflicts, whether we start next year or do it this year.
So that's a great suggestion. And again, yeah, I have, however, however this goes, this is a discussion for us, so we can do that. Director Lockman, did you?
Yeah, and I don't know if, maybe in addition to the conversation about the calendar and then a conversation about location, I know that we, I believe the board had talked about revisiting our meeting structure and our format. Currently, we have two business meetings, and I think there's some opinion that has limited our ability to really dive deep into some of the learning and some of the instruction and initiatives that Superintendent Pontrelli and her team are leading. And so I would offer that maybe we could have that as part of a conversation as well to reexamine, and if there's any interest to the board to go back to a learning session. If we still needed to have two business meetings, we could do that, but one would be followed by a learning session where we could go a little deeper into some of the learning that the board could do.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing, at the next meeting, we will have the calendar as an action item with adding, as Director Patachik's request, to get what types of activities we're dealing with on Tuesdays and Thursdays, add a secondary conversation piece, not an action item, to discuss the Oak Park movement when Denise Pontrelli is back. And third, to also address the, just the way our board format, consideration for that. Is that right?
And I just wanted to add to what, I guess I recall it a little differently than Director Stivlin. I've heard Superintendent Pontrelli mention several times about possible location change, so I don't think that...
I'm not sure what she's, what did she, what did you say that?
Oh, this is the first time that she was hearing about a location change.
Well, that's what I thought this discussion was about. That's what the, that's what the report says, is location change. So this is the first time I've heard about a meeting time change or date change.
Yeah, so I think she was referring to the Monday.
Oh, you weren't talking about location?
No, I was talking about this, what we're actually talking about, that I've not heard about changing the meetings to Mondays. I've never heard that before.
Okay, excuse me, I thought you were talking about the location.
Yeah, no, that's why I was confused, 'cause I thought we were gonna talk about having our meetings be changed to Oak Park, 'cause that's what it says in the document. So I was just, I was confused.
I hear you. I don't blame you for being confused, actually. 'Cause I see that and that's...
I was a little confused.
That's different than what I'm reading, so I understand completely. Director Hepner?
So the question for the next meeting, the question is Monday night or Thursday night?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
As one action item, right? And then also...
That is the only action item.
Okay, so...
That's all I wanted.
Is the calendar.
So I guess what, the point I was making earlier, because we haven't actually discussed at the board table a location change, so I would be more comfortable if we take action on both separately, but that it seems like if we're gonna, if we need board action to change nights, we should also need board action to change locations, is what it seems like it should be.
I would agree, and can I just?
Yep, go ahead. Director Stivlin?
I'm open to considering different options for what night of the week we have our meetings. I personally really like Thursdays because I think it's a good place in the week for most people to kind of catch up and find out what's going on and kind of get momentum, you know, away from the weekend and whatnot. But I'd be open to considering Monday, at least for me right now. I think I would rather keep it the way we have it for now until the end of the year and then look at possibly changing the date at the, if we were gonna decide to change it, I would say let's make it for, to start in January with a new year, so, you know, we have an organizational meeting in January. That seems like a really nice place to make a change like that.
Yep.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Director, or Director Haveland?
I'd be happy to contact the secondary principals and find out what kind of schedules they have on Mondays.
Okay, thank you.
And get back to you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Director Patachik?
Number one, if you would add to your list, I think Barb and others noted it, when the packets, we would get the packets, and if it were moved to Monday, when that would back it up. And I'm saying Friday right now is a pretty convenient time. I don't know if it would be come Monday or whatever, but I want the staffs involved.
Enough time for the...
And then one more after that, because I think it goes in location. I think I've spoken a number of times, I think several other board members have, I'm not particularly fond of the architecture of this room. I think it's very intimidating. I think it's very imposing, particularly for community members. So I'm not necessarily opposed to changing the location of these meetings. But to give us a little bit of input before, if there was some way board members could at least take a peek prior to, to see what the new location might look like at Oak Park, in other words, the room, how it's set up, how it's... Because again, like I say with the architecture, I almost feel like we're in a judicial role here, and we've got the sinners in front of us or something like that. And I would design it much different. And my hope is that Oak Park Heights and what's proposed there is less that sort of fashion, but I don't know that.
Nope, thank you very much. And again, I just, it's, sorry, George, I, she did, Denise did comment that we will be waiting until the September meeting for that discussion about CSB, so I just was going back in those emails and checking. Director Hepner?
Well, I'm sure Director Haveland remembers also, for I think about the first 30 years I was in the district, we had it at Central Services. And that seemed to work fine. It brought us off this, you know, looking down at everybody out there, and it got us on the same level. I thought that was actually much better than what we have, and I think I've told you that before. I think we agree that this is not a good sightline for us to have. And that was the discussion initially that I thought we were going to Oak Park for, is to get into the media center and be able to talk with people rather than talk to them.
And, but I'm saying, even as we ponder the decision, actually being there, seeing it, Georgia, I think a favorite of yours and mine has always been the Learning Center, or rather, the Media Center over at Stillwater Junior High School. But again, whether it's acoustics, whether it's the seating, I'd like a little bit of a peek ahead of time.
I think we could probably do that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Any other questions, comments? I think I've got it all. I might send a note to all of you afterwards to make sure I've got this correct, and if you could just let me know if I'm missing anything on that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Moving on, moving on to action items. The first action item is district memberships, 2018 to 2019. And again, that's me, I think we're all pretty aware at this point of the membership discussion. We have to, at this point, first of all, we wanna see a video, Barb has a video that we need to see to start this out. Do you have other discussion while I... Well, we could sing or... It is. The Minnesota State High School League does require the governing board to watch the video, why we play, in order to, as part of passing your resolution to participate in the organization. So with that, I will hopefully pull up the video.
I think the culture of sport is broken. Success is defined by winning, by having more points on the scoreboard at the end of the day than the other team. That's where the value lies. And whose name is in the paper the next day? And who had the most points? And who had the most rebounds? And who won the game? And who gets to the championship?
It's the reason why we do it.
The Minnesota State High... Jody Redman is passionate about developing the human potential of students. She's leading a national movement to reclaim the purpose of sports.
The pressure to win, and sometimes at all costs, is significant. Kids feel it. They feel it from their coaches, they feel it from their parents, they feel it from their friends. They feel the pressure to be able to win.
When we think of how our culture values high school sports today, certain words come to mind, and that, a former coach and NFL star, Joe Erman.
Destructive.
Expectations.
Regressive.
Trophies.
Ooh.
Win at all costs.
Lack of value.
Win at all costs.
Lack of value, yes, yes. Missed opportunities.
Zero fun, sir.
Zero fun. Misguided.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunate, sad.
When we look at education-based athletics and what a trophy means, I think it's about the experience. It's about what did we provide those students that was life-sustaining through trying to get the trophy?
Today's student athletes feel the pressure to compete at a high level, so they drop out of sports. Seventy percent quit by the age of 13, and they miss out on a big educational benefit.
There's a University of Kansas study that draws a correlation between kids who participate and are involved in high school athletic and activity programs. Students that are involved in those activities do much better academically than students who are not. The research shows that the reason for that is school connectedness.
It's been amazing what we've learned.
Five years ago, Mounds View High School began to survey their students, asking what they really get from being involved in the school's athletic and activity programs.
I was shocked to find out that our coaches and advisors are equally as important in the lives of our students as our teachers. It was a game changer for us. Our whole district, where we're going and how we value activities, it's not after-school. It's a part of the educational process. It is no longer an extra. We've defined that, and it's something that we value every bit as much as what they do during the school day.
The purpose of high school athletic programs is not to develop college or professional athletes. In fact, most students, 97%, will not play organized sports after they graduate. Instead, these powerful mentors, we call coaches, have four years to make a difference in kids' lives, to teach them life lessons that will help prepare them to be successful in life.
I will be honest, our goal is to win. Our goal in many sports is to win a state championship.
Winning has a place, and there is value in learning how to win. However, that's not our purpose.
Our purpose is to enjoy that experience, enjoy their teammates, enjoy their coaches, and learn from whatever took place on the field or the quarter on the ice on that given day.
Our purpose isn't the score at the end of the game. The purpose is the growth and development that comes through trying to achieve that win.
Three objectives I have, I want him to be a better baseball player, better teammate, and a better person at the end of the year.
We're working with coaches to develop their own purpose statement.
So why do I coach the way that I do? It comes because I had a couple of coaches in my life that touched me and changed my life.
Joe Erman has been called the most important coach in America and a leading voice for change in how we coach our kids in sports today.
Why do you coach? Is it about you or is it about your players?
A transactional coach is basically a coach that uses his platform and position for his own self-edification, for his own identity, his own empowerment, at the expense of the development of their players. It's kind of, if you meet my needs, my demands as a transactional coach, then I'll give you playing time, I'll give you praise, some kind of plaudits, but it's basically using young people.
As a child growing up, I had a lot of transactional coaches when I was younger because I was a very talented kid. Once I got to high school, my head coach, I didn't have a dad, so my head coach was my dad. It's tough. And he showed me I'm more than just an athlete.
Transformational coaches basically understand the power, platform, position they have in the lives of young people, and they're gonna use that to change the arc of every young person's life, to help them develop morally, ethically, socially, and emotionally. Transformational coaches mentor young people. And to mentor, you have to build a relationship with people. Transactional coaches do nothing but monitor young people. They move them from drill to drill, season to season, no relationship, no contact.
When I first started coaching, I only had one goal, and that was to win at all costs. And I don't use that term lightly, I know how it sounds, and I'm not very happy with who I was as a coach then, now looking back.
To be a better coach, you gotta be a better you.
And now, our focus is much more on what I'll call trying to build a team family within the chemistry of our individual teams that I coach, and trying to find ways for our athletes to grow as people.
Get excited, can't wait, let's go.
Every day, Coach Troy Kors works hard to keep his purpose alive in everything he does, and he's helping his team's student athletes to do the same.
Good, good, good. Nice. What three words would identify you as an athlete? This is completely you as an individual, and what you wanna get out of the sport?
Family.
Okay, how come?
Um, 'cause you basically feel like a family, you can like go to them for anything, they'll help you with anything.
The word I chose was friendship, and I go and track back, just hang out with people I know and just gain to know them. I chose responsibility because I feel like you have to be able to rely on others and you have to be reliable yourself.
I'm gonna take five, you have six, you have seven.
I grabbed three words as well, and mine goes like this. I coach to create positive relationships with my athletes so they know I care about them, while striving to be an authentic leader who they can trust, as we both work together to discover joy in our sport and through competition.
That was a good time, 13, 6, 5?
Thank you.
Nicely done, well done, well done.
I'm mostly in track just to have fun. Just 'cause I'm not the best doesn't mean it's a problem.
Well, the big group's kinda like family to me.
For me, it looks like we're enjoying ourselves more. The idea of sharing in something and enjoying each other's company and being a part of a sport we love to play. And for me, that's been the biggest change, I see.
For a coach to withstand the pressure of the current win-at-all-costs sports culture and to truly be invested in transforming the lives of students, there must be support. Support from school leaders, parents, and the community. For this to happen, we must want more for our kids than just wins, losses, and a good performance.
We wanna give them more. We wanna give them a significant experience that's going to help them develop into people that are going to live in our community. We wanna give them a way of being successful that will sustain them throughout their lifetime, not just until the season's over. So we have to align school communities around this idea that we are purpose-based, we're education-based.
I want school boards to reclaim sports in the name of education. I think school boards need to make sure that we move away from this win-at-all-costs. We need to start building a system where coaches are held accountable for the transformative impact they have in the lives of their students.
It really boils down to what do we wanna give our children beyond the trophy, beyond just the win. beyond just the win and the loss, beyond the trophy case.
Hopeful.
Filled with potential.
Men who have great character.
Yeah. Confusion and mistake-making rocks.
And every child feels loved and belongs.
Connected.
Greater relational capacity.
Wow. You're rocking. What else you got in there?
Thank you, Barb. All right, so with that, you know, I'm open to entertain a motion and a second to approve the district memberships from 2018-19.
I move.
All second. All right, so moved by Mike Potajek, second by Sarah Stivlin. Any discussion? All right, so you have no discussion. I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Well, that was quick and easy. I was thinking, all right. All right, so now we're moving on to action item B, resolution reauthorizing a previously authorized board approval, approved referendum authority, and that is Ms. Holheisel.
Thank you, Board Chair Pelletier and board members. The resolution before you has been in front of you, well, officially one time, and we had discussed it at a prior meeting. So we discussed it at the June, our June meeting, and then it was in report form in July. And for Director Hovland, just a slight update to afford you the opportunity to hear what the others had heard, that the board had previously authorized board-approved referendum authority in the amount of $300 per adjusted pupil unit pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 126(c) dot 17 subdivision 9a. And so what had happened five years ago is we had passed an operating referendum, and at that time legislatively, the board could transfer $300 of that voter-approved referendum to a non-voter-approved referendum category. It didn't affect, it doesn't affect, and that's where it's resided ever since. It needs to be renewed every five years, or we had a five-year limit on it the last time, and it's now up for renewal. The governor, legislatively, it was part of the package that went to the governor of Minnesota this spring as far as removing this, the authority would exist, it was removing the renewal option so it would automatically happen. With the governor's veto, that was taken off, and so now this is an action in front of our board. Any questions? Otherwise, I have not, other than the formal board meetings, just so you are aware, I have not received any questions since the presentation in July.
Any questions? Director Pearson?
Just for the sake of those watching, what are the implications of not, if we were not to pass this, what would it mean?
It would go back into our voter-approved category. So at this time, financially, it would mean nothing for us. What it would do is possibly, and this would be a few years out, upon expiration of our operating-approved referendum, it would, it could adjust the dollar amount that we go out for while still maintaining what we're receiving in revenue. It might be reflective on how it looks on a ballot. It could also be reflective if you were to not approve. It could be reflective of a larger dollar amount that wouldn't, could potentially not pass at the polls.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Director Potajek.
No.
Anyone down here?
I'll defer to Sarah first.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify what your answer just was that was really helpful. So if we were not to approve this, it would go to, it would revert back to a voter-approved levy. The money wouldn't disappear necessarily. I thought, what I understood was that those, that $300 would actually end at the end of this year, this fiscal year.
No, it would, it would resort back into the voter, it would revert back to the voter-approved authority for the remainder.
That's helpful. Thank you.
One, I think that how, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it really only affects, if our next levy were to fail, the 300 would be there if we passed this.
Correct.
But it wouldn't be if we didn't.
Correct.
Director Potajek?
And the total amount of money we're talking about is $300, basically, times 8,300 students roughly, or 8,200 students. So what does that come out to? Couple million dollars or something like...
2.7 to 3.
Yeah. And then one other point, and I think you made it in what you've put on paper here. This passed both legislative houses so that it would be automatic. It wouldn't come to the board. It would just roll over, and it came very, very close. I think due to other issues, that whole omnibus proposal was vetoed by the governor. And so I'm saying, I'm not sure even a year from now or so, this might pass again, regardless of who wins the election. I think it was that close.
I would tend to agree with your assessment.
Yeah.
Director Hefner?
When we did this, what was the one that we didn't do at the time? Didn't we have a choice of two? If I remember right, we had a 300 and we had like a 474 or something like that?
It was 424, $424 of local optional revenue.
Okay, and we didn't do that one, but we did do this.
And the, what, and the 424, at that time, I want to say we did the 424 following, or somehow it played out legislatively that that, you only did the 300 in 2013. I do recall that. The 424 was of, it changed category names, and now almost every district in the state of Minnesota does 424. Because it was a metro, it essentially was a metro bill at that time, and now it's a statewide. So that has changed in capacity. But when you voted the 300 in, that's all you did at that time.
Director Potajek?
I think it's important for viewers to know to not to confuse this with the bond election that was passed. This was the renewal of the levy and the increased levy, and date-wise, is that about four years ago?
Well, this was five. That's why we're at the expiration.
Five years ago, yeah. So I'm saying, don't confuse the two because they're very different. One was for carrying out operations. That's what we're talking about tonight. And the most recent was for buildings or capital.
Correct.
Thank you.
And just for clarification into the 424, the difference between that is, so at the time when we were out for operating referendum in 2013, what the voters approved, which was 1,500 and some odd dollars, was, we were at that time about $6 away from what we could ask our voters as far as what the state capped us at. This didn't change that. When the $424 went into play for the state of Minnesota, it actually dropped us down, or it changed where now we could actually levy if our voters were to approve. It grew our ability to levy another $424 at that time. Where we were once at the cap, or $6 away from the cap, we became about $430 away from the cap because of the passage of what Director Hefner had mentioned legislatively, not... So that changed our cap factor back then. There was other components to that $424.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director Stivlin?
Yeah, no, I, generally speaking, I am a believer in, you know, really empowering the community to support the local schools with their vote. I think that's an important thing, but I also am in support of stable financing for education. It's so important, I can't imagine anything more important for us to spend our money on as a community. So I would be, I would like to make a motion that we pass this resolution because I just think it will provide us a little bit of stability going forward. I think we just need to remember when we do, as we go forward planning with whatever future voter-approved levies, that we keep this in mind so we don't overtax our community.
I'll make a second. All right, second by Director Pearson. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on down the line here, we are on item 11c, Series 300 Policies, School Board Policy Working Group. Director Hefner?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to take these all at one time. The last meeting, we didn't have significant discussion about any of the 301 through 306. We did make some, I'll say grammatical changes to it, but other than that, our, when we had our policy working group, we didn't really change anything. We took your suggestions and implemented them, so there's really nothing different than there was at the last meeting. If anybody has any questions, we can try to answer them, but it's basically the same as what we had. Mike?
I have what I consider two very minor changes, but I think they're significant. And if those present will turn to Superintendent Contract Duties and Evaluation Policy Number 304, and particularly if you go down to B, and the very last sentence of B reads, "The school board shall use this instrument," and they're talking about a performance appraisal instrument, as spelled out in the sentence preceding, "to periodically evaluate the performance of the superintendent." What I would like to see the change, and I don't think it destroys the intent at all, rather than to say periodically, I would cross out periodically and use the word annually.
I think we did that in our last copy, didn't we?
No, I think that was in a different one where we added the word annually.
Okay, well, I've got it on mine, so either you said it before or we talked about it at the meeting.
Yeah, and I apologize, I wasn't at the last board meeting, so I may have missed that.
Well, and thank you. And like I say, that would take care of that. The other one that I would ask you to take a look at is number 305, and this talks about policy implementation. And maybe this came up at last time, and maybe again you corrected me, so please do reiterate. It says, "Under 305a General Statement of Policy, it shall be the responsibility of the superintendent to implement school board policy and to recommend additions or modifications." My only reservation on that is that I don't see a room where board members could propose policy changes as well. And that may be someplace else in policy. I just want to make sure it shows up someplace where not all policy recommendations for additions or modifications come from the superintendent or the administration, but they also may come from board members.
Can I just...
Just to clarify, Mike, the title of this policy is Policy Implementation. There is elsewhere, I think, the development of policy.
Okay.
And that would fall more under the board responsibility and others.
Yeah.
But this specifically is implementation, so it does, at least in my opinion, it really is unique to the superintendent.
Okay. And what I would ask is that as you do your policy, work somewhere along the line, and I don't need it right now. If you say it's elsewhere, I'll trust that for tonight, and just keep it in mind as something else that I think we should take an interest in.
Can you just clarify? I'm not sure if I understand what you mean.
What I mean by this is that, and it could come from the policy committee, is that in working with changes, modifications, or review, you'll say, golly, we never had a policy on social media or whatever. And I'm not suggesting anything tonight as much as to say, it doesn't have to come from administration, it doesn't have to come from the superintendent, but it could also come from board members.
Right. I think it, I think there's a variety of verbs that we use in another policy, and I think Sarah's right on this one, and it's implement is the key verb in this.
And that makes sense to me, but those are the only two concerns I had.
Okay.
And I can see, can I just say one more response? That it says, "Implement school board policy and to recommend additions or modifications." And I can see where that would get you, you know, that would be questioned. But I think in the process of implementing a policy, you may find that there's something unworkable or difficult, or that you need more clarification or something like that. So then that would be the responsibility of the superintendent to bring that back to the board for recommendation.
All right, we are going, we, thank you, we welcome you back. We had, we had a bit of a medical situation with Mr. Hovland, and our, I'm just reporting that our emergency, I want to thank our emergency team from Lakeview who came immediately. And Mr. Hovland is in very good care right now, but at this time, we've decided to adjourn the meeting, and we wish Mr. Hovland the very best. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. All right, we are going to adjourn at this time to close session for discussion of property identified as marine elementary schools pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13d.05 subdivision 3 to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second, so moved by Director Lachlan, and second by Director Stivlin. Can I please have a vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Nay, this motion carries unanimously. Adjourned. Thank you.